Johnny, the cover's closed. The cover's closed.
Welcome to the October sixteenth City Council meeting.
Turn it more.
If you'd please dial out your cell phones. Thank you for being here, Johnny. The meeting is called to order at six P M.
This is twisting.
Every council member is present except for Deputy Mayor Pro Temp who we think is not available tonight due to work reasons. We have a forum. We'll start with the invocation. Our gracious Father, we always want to thank you for creating Oak Point and making it a beautiful place to live. Guide us with your wisdom and your discernment to do the very best for our residents. We pray for all of those that are affected by the recent storms. We pray for healing for those that are ill. Remind us to thank our veterans for their service. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now to the Texas flag. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Agenda item number four is proclamation. Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October twenty twenty four. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease and increase public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer diagnosis and treatment. And whereas the American Cancer Society recommends annual breast cancer screening with mammograms starting by age forty. Early detection saves lives, so schedule your mammogram today. And whereas many organizations continue to search for a cure through vital research and physicians, public health professionals, and advocates continue to educate our community about the awareness and innovative advancements in early detection and treatment. And whereas the city of Oak Point supports breast cancer research and recognizes the trauma breast cancer brings and understand that this horrible disease attracts women and men within the Oak Point workforce and community. Now therefore, I, Deana McMayor of the city of Oak Point, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty four as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Oak Point and acknowledge all survivors' strength and ask all to join in this worthwhile cause which aims to offer support for those courageously battling this disease, to recognize the many survivors and to honor those who lost their lives in this disease. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and paused the great seal of the city of Oak Point to be affixed to this sixteenth day of October twenty twenty four. Our next proclamation is for our veterans. Whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been purchased and maintained at a high price throughout our history. And whereas since the establishment of the original thirteen states, Americans have been willing to fight and die to preserve their individual rights guaranteed in the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights. And whereas we owe a great debt to those who have served in defense of this nation. And whereas throughout the generations, their sacrifices have preserved our unique form of government dedicated to human rights and respect for the individual. And whereas for many, that sacrifice has ended in permanent injury or death. Yet their spirit remains in the continued preservation of our freedoms and the promise of liberty established as an example for all the oppressed persons of the world. And whereas in honor of these dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation so that their sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of a people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy. Now therefore, I, Deana McMayor of the city of Oak Point, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim November tenth through November sixteen as Veterans Appreciation Week and urge all citizens to honor our veterans and rededicate themselves to the preservation of our liberties under the Constitution. Agenda item five is items of community interest. Johnny?
Yes. We have early voting starting in the community room on October twenty first and ends November first. And then I want everybody to know if you have more details, you can check voted.com and you'll get all kinds of good details on the website. Oak Point is also having their shadowy spectacular trunk retreat, October twenty fifth from six to eight thirty P M.
We also have a Veterans Day recognition, the Saturday before Veterans Day. I think that's from nine.
The night?
Yes, it is.
And Paul has some wonderful plans for our veterans.
I do.
Recognition, we're very excited about it.
We do.
Anything else, Johnny? Agenda item six is public input. I did not receive any requests to speak. Agenda item seven, presentation and discussion of the following reports. The financial report for September twenty twenty four. Donna, thank you for your responses to the questions that we asked for the meeting. Counsel, do y'all have anything for Donna?
I have a line number, which probably don't need it. Three hundred dollar donation. You know about that?
I'm the ones who have been in in honor of Veterans Month. It's for Wild Card. Wild Card.
I note that in terms of permits and terms of budget revenue, our franchise fees are up two hundred thousand, terms are down one hundred eighty. And the mortgage years are up to twenty eight, so that net amount grew up about fifty thousand relative to our budget revenues. Pretty damn close, we estimate. One takes care of the other.
Attorney, do you have a question? Municipal court report for September twenty twenty four. Does anyone have any questions on that report? I've noticed there's a big difference in the amount kept by the city between the first six months and the last six months. In the first six months, we collected about sixty seven thousand, and in the second six months, we collected only about forty five thousand. Any comments on what that might be? D P S, do y'all have any thoughts?
I think some of our tickets were down a little bit. I think that's a lot of things over there. But I know with the whole blue and blue system, we are getting, we seem to be getting paid a little bit easier because of sending out the reminders and my goodness, hopefully that's going to help. People just pay them rather than sit around.
Thank you. Police department report for September twenty twenty four. Counsel, do you have any questions?
There was a grad school on one, but I'm sure there's a lot of violations at this time.
Yeah, I think there was only one that I really saw. It was kind of higher, but everything else was.
Starting out with Detective. How, how, isn't it?
I don't. He's on, he's on that show, so.
Any other questions for D P S? Fire Department report for September twenty twenty four. Chief Roach, you have some comments for us?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. As long as everybody knows, we have the three current students that have been on the floor for the last nine months. Actually, we're taking their tests yesterday and today. I haven't got word yet, but everything looks like they're rocking and rolling through it. Their graduation is actually set for October thirtieth. It's going to be in the canyon six thirty that evening. If anybody wants to attend, I would have you some information on that. But they seem to be doing great. We've got to do reviews from all their clinicals and the hospitals they work at, things like that, so. The other thing is I just wanted to remind everybody that the Dent County Firefighter Memorial Service on October thirtieth as well. They'll be at the administrative courthouse there on two eighty eight in Dent. That's where they're picking up some speed. Obviously, we do the monitoring and read the names of all the fallen firefighters. Cop Bell's fire chief, Chief Richardson, he actually leads that, their department kind of leads putting that together. They're a little bit plus. Memorial Service with all their different things they have, but. He's mentioned he's planning something a little bit special for the ones that are local. There are a few departments they sent out requests from if they, if local departments within our specific county, any fallen members. So kind of plan something special for those specific members as well. Do y'all have information to move up to attend if you have time?
Have come in the past and it's a very important memorial. And on your three E M Ts that are about to graduate, can we recognize them in November after the graduation?
Yes, they kind of held off a little bit just to say Steve Graves got ahead.
Thank you. Do y'all have any questions for Chief Roach?
I have a kind of simple question. Comes up a lot in conversations. Since we had a full moon tonight or last night, the time of the year, you guys ever seen a kind of difference between the full moon and the moon places affect the crime and fires? Always thought, always, excuse my French, I always thought that to be a.
I would say, I would say no. There may be some instances of service jurisdictions or departments that has actual statistics that show that. Twenty years here on fire side, fifteen years in police side here, I've never really seen any significance that makes me think that's the correlation.
We have, we have very smart, wise and thoughtful residents. They got no brains.
No wolf attacks?
It seems, it seems to be that things go good on the regular, just as well as bad. People don't really seem to quit easily, time ran slow.
Good enough, like, no more surveillance.
Agenda item number A, report from council, council liaison. A update on the part October meeting. Scott, can you help us with that?
No, there wasn't a meeting, so.
Well, thank you very much. A update on the Economic Development Corporation October meeting. Councilmember Wyler, can you help us with that? There was one.
So there was one and it was a very robust meeting, so there was a lot of discussion. Including a closed session to discuss opportunities, commercial opportunities and incentives that we learned about from Jason Cloud's activity. No action was set to be taken on that. The financial review included a full fiscal year detail on the sales tax income. And year over year, sales taxes seemed like increased a bit over two percent. That are the debits that we experienced from Encore situation. And the E D C requested that we get some clarity on exactly what the Encore deductions were so that there would be a better understanding of what the actual year over year increase in sales taxes were without the deduction. So I think that information will be forthcoming at the next meeting. Jason then gave an, gave an update on commercial opportunities and recruiting activity by Catalyst on our behalf. There have been some substantive discussions actually and some interest from one major anchor for the Aishwara retail area, Marta and seven twenty. Additional interest from a couple of other backup options that wouldn't be redundant. Executive interest from, I think what he said was about six restaurant or casual dining businesses and maybe forty additional or evaluating opportunities in Oak Point. So there's a lot of interest and we gained through the meeting in Austin, I think some momentum for the direction that things are going. The next event that we'll be marketing at will be the I C S C Texas Conference we held in January in Dallas. Jason expressed the importance of establishing design concepts, at least design concepts for the town center property to provide some leverage and momentum for closing some of these opportunities and creating more. Related to that, the E D C budgeted for a new trade show booth fixture and Brad has started that process and the plans to have some design proposals available for the November E D C meeting so that we can have the new equipment ready for January. Brad also gave an update noting, I guess most importantly is the next joint meeting with half for the city council and E D C will be coming up October twenty second. So I guess that's next week. And the wayfinding signs, we probably all noticed that some ways finding signs are starting to appear and the new monument sign is out there, which looks very nice. I think it still needs some finishing, but. And it was noted that there was some confusion by the installer over where the sign should have been installed and it was unclear who was actually responsible for the correct communication between the installer, the project manager and the staff, so. The signs being replaced, still need to be removed and I think that will be done by public works, sounds like. And finally, there was a really lengthy discussion, but very timely and was been observed regarding retail trends in neighboring cities and towns. It was led by James Hankins and he had a lot of interesting insights for, for us to consider. Some of the key takeaways were very quickly, striking right bounds between commercial retail property and sufficient rooftops to support businesses that come to Oak Point, recognizing that our true trade area is probably El Dorado to three eighty and east to west just between the lakes. Daytime business is hard to come by, lunch crowds, things like that. Most casual dining and restaurants depend on lunch business to be successful and we don't have a lot of daytime activity here as people tend to leave and come back. We have a limited number of people that actually work in the city. Very interestingly, he, he noted that it's important that we should be thinking about the look between Marta and.
Gil.
Salma McDonald's, sorry.
Martin Gil.
Pardon me, oh yeah. And trying to focus our attention on that area and create an outstanding area for retail that, that people, it becomes a destination people want to come to. Creating a consistent look along that corridor. Things like making sure all the monument signs are the same and maybe have our Oak Point design on them. Those things go a long way toward ensuring that the corridor be success. And finally, he, he noted that, you know, seeking out the right developers is also important. Developers who share in the city's vision. It's important for co-setting and for our commercial development so that it'll be critical to success. Be important that we focus the near term on that one concentrated area while maintaining some flexibility for the rest of what we think might become retail in the longer term. It was a great discussion. There's a lot of talk about how we plan for the future, what our vision is for twenty and thirty years out. So what do we really need to fund? Things like road repair and infrastructure. And are we really looking at what the balance is between property tax and sales tax to be able to focus in on what, what's going to drive our ability to pay for those services that people are looking for in the future? That's that.
Thank you, Greg. I think many of us were curious about the targeted and the targeted retailers in the interest. And you mentioned it was a closed session. The reason it's in closed session and it can't be talked about is because it's very competitive. And we don't want to let out who we're visiting with and there's neighboring cities that might also target those retailers. It's not that you're just trying to keep everything top secret, there's a reason because it's so competitive. Thank you, Greg. Agenda item number nine, consider and act upon the minutes for the September eighteenth and twenty fifth of twenty twenty four City Council meetings.
I could only two pretty little minutes and Brad.
Is there a second? So any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Number ten, discussion regarding, oh wait, is it? Well, I'll read it. Discussion regarding improvements to the vote ramp. This was requested by Deputy Mayor Pro Temp Loiki and he is not here tonight. I suggest we reschedule it for November. And I'm going to do the same for number eleven. Discussion regarding the city's newsletter distribution was also requested by Deputy Mayor Pro Temp Loiki. He is not here. I suggest we save that also for November. And I see that staff has done a lot of work on the cost and other details regarding the newsletter. We'll take care of that next month, if you don't mind.
I, I think we'll just place it on the next agenda, you know, that, that's fine.
Agenda item number twelve, update on short-term rentals. Councilmember Horatio requested this.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of give an update when we were, I think the last time you mentioned that was currently six.
Yeah, it was actually seven. There's one person that has two. I was counting that as one, but we have those, everyone's up to date on their payments. Like I said, I usually email everyone at the beginning of this month or do the end of this month. Already got one in and then I'll check back to them probably next week sometime, but. And they're all up to date making their permits.
If you have any adverse reactions, adverse reports?
So I would agree with all of them, myself and Senator Zoski, because we're going to be in Florida again. We have three that we've had called that.
Recent call?
I'm sorry.
Recent calls or just ever?
The one in Enson, we've had three calls in twenty four. Woodbridge, we've had three calls in twenty four, but that was initiated by the owner. They needed our assistance to take a fork. And then three eighteen, Doggy, we've had seven calls, but that was in twenty twenty three. And most of those were for noise. And we address all of those with them. Other than that, actually we haven't had a ton of calls to kind of reply.
So you went all the way back to twenty twenty three?
Yes, sir.
So what do you have this year?
For this year, really, the biggest is Enson. We had three calls this year and it was all for weed and grass, which there was no violation. One was for meat and plants, that's all on that. And the other was for a trailer that was there, which was also not a violation at all.
So really no disturbing the peace or anything?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any new articles?
You have S T Rs now, no news.
And then I guess the only other, first I have is Jeff. There's been any updates in any cases in Texas that you may familiar with related to laws?
No, I mean, just the, you know, previously what we had talked about, you know, the city of Arlington case was the most pro-city where they, you know, they'd done twenty-two different public hearings to address the, the short-term rental and then they created an entertainment area where short-term rentals were allowed and, but other areas of the city it was not allowed. Most of the other cases struck down the short-term rental ordinance for various reasons. But again, nothing of late.
Anything going on with Dallas? Because did Dallas put a moratorium or shut down?
They have, but yeah, just no update on that, on the progress of that case. Or at least I'm not aware of it, yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah, one other, Jeff. Is it possible to consider distance between S T Rs? I mean, as a. Back to the, actually, you can't have too, too close within, you know, court law.
I have not seen that be successful for other cities, I think Austin in particular. So I, yeah, I'm not, I don't, I wouldn't suggest that.
And where some cities that designate an area, they call it entertainment area or visitor area and they concentrate on there. So I think it's unlikely that you could send that number.
But, but for the first applicant to be able to do, you know, short-term rental and there be else around them can't, that, you're dealing with property right interest and so that property right becomes, just because they were first, now the other property owner gets denied that property right, that, that's, I think problematic.
One last question, anything on the, on the horizon on the, the, the legislature?
Well, they start pre-filing in November, you know, it's just right around the corner. I, I would imagine they refiled the bill that was filed last session that basically prohibited cities from doing anything on short-term rentals, that'd be my guess. But yeah, it's too early to say.
Thank you. Agenda item number thirteen, discussion regarding drone deliveries, Councilmember Horatio.
Yes, this is another, another thing I thought about. I reached out to counsel some years, not much of, of your own, but I've seen that wing has not fully functioning at first, apparently doing deliveries and it looked like standard in Dallas and many other cities around, so. I know I'm personally not interested in having drones flying around my neighborhood. And I would think that a lot of children of, of our residents might have similar concerns or convictions. So I was just wondering where, where that sits. Is there anything that can be done about this? What are laws in place, what actually play? So this is why.
Well, good evening. I, I've handed out for each of y'all, chapter two, four twenty-three, the government code. And that is basically the drone statute that the legislature passed a number of years ago. I guess leading, so, thank you. I guess probably two years ago, a court declared that statute unconstitutional. And it was eventually news reporters filed suit against the state of Texas prohibiting news reporters from using drones to do various reports. And, and the, the judge said, you know, he thought the whole chapter four twenty-three was unconstitutional. He then issued an order citing various sections of the statute as unconstitutional. That went up on appeal, went to the Fifth Circuit. Fifth Circuit in January said, no, it is constitutional. And so with that as a backdrop, so you had some city regulation, you know, two years ago when the judge said it's unconstitutional. Four twenty-three in particular, I guess the very last, or second to last page of what I've handed out. It's four twenty-three point zero zero nine of that, of that chapter, Regulation of Unmanned Aircraft by Political Subdivisions. And then the very last page of the handout, subsection B as a boy, B and C of that. And then the very last page of the handout, subsection B as employed, B and C of that statute basically says, you know, except as provided in subsection C, a political subdivision, a city may not adopt or enforce any ordinance, order or other similar measure regarding the operation of an unmanned aircraft. And then C gives you the exceptions. And it basically allows a political subdivision or the city to adopt some sort of ordinance regarding the use of drones at a special event. The city's own internal use of drones, you know, when they can use it. And then also the use of drones near a facility or infrastructure owned by a political subdivision if you have to fly in for authorization from the FAA. So basically airports, you could regulate drones near, you know, city airports. So those are the only three areas that a city can regulate drone currently. But there had been some litigation, it got declared unconstitutional. Then the Fifth Circuit in January said, no, it is, it is constitutional. So you may have seen some cities do some regulations, but I think that that, you know, subsection B and C of that last section, it is the limit on what we can do.
Thank you for your research.
Oh, you're welcome.
So then there's a couple of other questions, just about drones, related to privacy concerns. Maybe part of time now, the pool party in my backyard with the fence around.
Well, I think there are, those sort of prohibitions, maybe in the penal code that prohibit, you know, the use of drones for lewd purposes or, you know. And so, so there are those criminal provisions, aren't we, once? But as far as the city ordinance to regulate, we're, we're pretty limited.
And as far as airspace, do I actually, oh, do they airspace as a level?
Oh, then I don't know, but the FAA, the FAA thinks they, they regulate all the airspace, so that's.
Down to ground level?
Yeah, any sort of operation of drones, you know, that's an FAA issue.
So if there's nothing we can do about drones, then, and we, it's clearly for Congress purposes. So is there anything that we may want to consider for the city related to that? If there's drone deliveries, do we charge a franchise fee? Fee to delivery in our city?
I'd have to look at that. That, I mean, that, that seem like we're running up against the three reasons we can regulate. And so I.
We're not regulating any drones. It's literally something regulated towers before the city.
And, and someone might argue that's a barrier to entry into the city.
Well, you can deliver a car, but maybe that's.
I mean, for example, if you said your permit is $20,000 and you're not going to generate that much revenue, that would keep somebody from coming into the city. And in fact, that becomes a prohibition of drones if you set a fee at some, some level. So that, that would take some looking at.
Are you aware of any other cities doing anything about?
Yeah, I've seen like on the news, some cities say they're regulating drones and I've never really drilled down into it because I was always aware of this statute in, in the court case. So you know, I kind of, I, I know we've only got those three subsections that we, areas where we can regulate. And so, you know, I hear on Channel 8 or other news stations that so-and-so is doing something, but I've never really drilled much further into it.
I'm thinking about, remember 2017, we all got to do a motherfucker.
Well, you might have a, you know, firing a firearm within the city limits. I think there's a prohibition on that. And also you probably have property damage issue to deal with.
Tim also take care of it.
Why are you so anti-progress?
Sorry.
Why are you so anti-progress?
So. You did, you feel me? I shot it down. Oh, yes, Peter. So drones are operating in the air. It wasn't one of the drones. Generally, conversation here is, you know, the, so they have cameras, right? So what are our privacy rights? Who's demanding these drones?
Well, I mean.
They're being used by private corporations, you know, and then not to mention, I am concerned about.
That was kind of reporters, in the court case, the reporters issued, we want to report on these stories, use drones to do it. And the police in a couple of these instances say, hey, you can't have those drones out here. And so, you know, the court said, you know, it's a constitutional statute.
Any other questions or comments?
Right, my concern is just similar to STRs. I mean, I'm concerned about, you know, the privacy of individuals in my community. I mean, I want to be, you know, I'm less than.
And so the legislature's, legislature's tied cities' hands. And, you know, when they do that, we need to be able to point that out, you know, and say, you know, our esteemed legislature has done this. And, you know, in, in a whole range of areas, they've, they've limited what cities can do because they believe they know better and sometimes they don't.
My perception is that it's a fad and it's on the decline.
Well, apparently going to, you're dealing with Walmart.
Well, yeah, aside from the commercial aspect.
Well, but I mean, the commercial aspect isn't really the same, right? Because there's not, you know, a million neighbors flying drones over, you know, electric companies or whatever, that's our list of it, right? But, you know, once it's drone deliveries, everybody that's getting the car delivery from Walmart is now going to probably like the beginning of a drone delivery.
See, they started drone delivery.
I've got a bird's in my sky and, you know.
They started drone delivery in Holland and they bragged about their safety record, how they've never had a crash or anything of that nature. And the Walmart on 121, there is a power line. Well, they wrapped the cord, they're doing one flight, they wrapped the cord of the extension cord got stuck around the power line. They had a crash in the colony after they told the city that we have a perfect safety record. And so that's.
Well, I guess so that's another aspect of the question. If they're going to be deliveries in our city, who's responsible? If it's Walmart that's using them as a service, is it Walmart that's responsible? Or if they're the ones, who's operating the drones?
Well, that'd be, you know, plaintiff litigator to figure that out. And I mean, our, our teams are plumbed.
DPS, do you all have any comments on delivery drones? Any comments?
I'd have to really research. There's, I know there's a lot of changing laws with the drone stuff. My one thought is, like, I own a drone. If it's for a delivery person, my thought is it's probably going to be mostly automated by GPS. I can't see like a person operating each drone manually to an address. So I would think what operate for that might.
And not that privacy concern.
I mean, there's a whole host of regulations on that delivery. Like they have to have line of sight, somebody has to be on the ground watching where that drone goes and to where it's delivered. Whether Walmart does that or whoever's running the drones, I don't know. But, but there's a whole host of regulations on that.
I appreciate the concern for the special, I have nothing else to bring.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, yeah, we're, our hands are tied given that statute. And maybe that's an area to look at for the next legislative session. One of many of the legislatures inclined to listen to cities that session. Yeah.
Agenda item number 15, reading, oh wait, 14, recess into closed session in compliance with section 551.001 at Sec Texas Government Code to wit, A, Section 551.074 Personnel Matter, City Manager Annual Review and City Manager Agreement.